Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Cedar Wully City Council Meeting. Please rise for our flag suit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've got enough money.
Yes.
Three.
We've got a great turnout. We'll go to the consent calendar. And if council knows a drill, if there's something on there that you'd like to have pulled and discussed further, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar A through G.
The mayor, I'm not going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar from A through G.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Galbraith, second by Councilmember Wagner, to approve the consent calendar A through G. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Pass unanimous. Okay, heading right along. This is special presentation time, and this would be for Jeff. And I'm gonna stand up here and read it. Oh, we'll come over here and read it, and then the chief can...
And the association officers.
Okay, this is for Captain Jeff Griffith, and it's congratulations on your well-deserved retirement after 28 years of outstanding service, and sincere gratitude for the assistance, guidance, and outstanding leadership you've provided to the Cedar Wully Fire Department for so many years. You have set an example to be followed in the future, so you young guys, and cherished by those of us that were fortunate enough to have worked with you. You will be long remembered and missed with much respect, gratitude, and fondness to your friends and colleagues at Cedar Wully Fire Department, and I'm honored to give this.
Thank you. On behalf of the Cedar Wully Volunteer Fire Association, we'd like to present you with a gift. There's a substantial little something in there for you to use towards your retirement, and whatever you have as for your hobbies. And we want to appreciate your mentorship, your friendship, and your dedication over the years, sir.
I don't think I'm gonna go back and come back again. So I'm gonna swear a new police officer in, and I'll invite her up to go through this. This is another fun part. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna just read little segments of the sentence, like I said, and then you repeat it. So, Jeff. Okay, I, Angela Wagner, do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States...
I, Angela Wagner, do solemnly swear I am a citizen of the United States...
...in the state of Washington.
In the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of this state of Washington.
And will do, and will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability...
And to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and partially...
Truly, faithfully, and partially.
Perform the duties of the office, the police officer...
Perform the duties of the police office, of a police officer.
And in and for the city of Cedar Wully, Skagit County.
In and for the city of Cedar Wully and Skagit County.
Washington.
Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law...
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to have a kid pin your badge, or a significant other?
It's okay.
You got it? All right. Just to let everybody know, Angela's, we're getting her from another agency, and she's gonna go to the road, jump in the car with Heather, on the 20th of this month, so we toss her. Ready-made, ready-to-go, and she'll be fresh and primed here really quick. Thanks.
Sweet.
Okay, we are at a public comment time, and this is something that you'd want to speak about, unless it's Northern State, which I don't think we're gonna have an opening on that, no. So please limit your time to three to five minutes, and state your name and address for the record. All these people here, no one wants to speak. Okay, we will move to unfinished business. Item six, and this is a public meeting to decide whether the city will initiate the annexation of approximately 230 acres located on Northern State. And I will turn this over to Aaron.
Thanks, council. Before we begin, I'd just like to let you know that we've got our partner representatives in the audience today, Tim Holler and Skagit County Administrator, on behalf of the county, hiding in the back row. We've got Ann Sweeney, the special assistant to the director of DES, property owner representative, and Heather Haslip from the Port of Skagit. So we continue to benefit from a strong partnership on this project, and appreciate everyone's attendance. This comes to you as a follow-up from our last meeting, when the council set tonight's scheduled meeting. And I'm gonna turn the topic over to John to walk through the process. Just a couple of things to note. Tonight's meeting's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing. We will have a public hearing as part of the annexation process, and we'll also be letting anybody who's interested know tonight that they can begin submitting written comments as early as tonight. So tonight is not the time for public participation at the microphone, it's the time for council deliberation. And the action point that we're requesting is the adoption of a resolution that begins the process. So this is, this is not the end of the process, it's not a final decision, it's a resolution that says, "Let's proceed with annexation, and this is the geographic area that we're going to consider through the process." So with that, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to John, who will walk through the annexation process.
All right, thank you. So, as Aaron mentioned, at the previous city council meeting, we had on the agenda to discuss, setting a meeting date to discuss whether or not the city council would be willing to move forward with an annexation request from the state through the Department of Enterprise Services of roughly 225 acres of the Northern State campus area. You can see it on the map up here. The proposed annexation area that the state submitted their 10% initiation request is in the yellow bound, roughly in this area. And that's the only, that's the only area in the initiation part, request by the state. Now, you can see just sort of in the center there is a little island right here that is in between the existing city boundaries. So when we receive this request, under the rules of annexation and what the Boundary Review Board would be looking at, they, it stands to reason that those parcels in that island there would also be included. Those parcels are residential land owned by five separate property owners, all of whom have been notified of this process. So where we're at tonight is to move forward with the request from the state to initiate the annexation. So as you can see on this slide, this lays out the step-by-step process of an annexation. So first, we receive that 10% notice of annexation request. That was done, that was brought to the city council. City council set today as a date to discuss this item. That's the second item you see. The way today's meeting is hoped to run is, we have the public meeting before the council, and the council has a resolution in front of them. That resolution represents the action requested, gives some background information, including geographically modifying the annexation request to be not just the 225 acres of the state-owned property, but those five acres, those five properties also that are bound by that area that would logically be part of this annexation also. So this resolution is to ask if the city council, or to state the city council's support for, to move forward with the petition for the proposed annexation and accepting the geographically modified area as described in Exhibit B, which is that map, that second This resolution also makes a statement that the both parcels should be annexed into the city under the zoning designation of public for the state-owned property, and for residential five, for the residential properties. That's consistent with the comprehensive plan designation of these properties, which of course are all urban growth areas. So our comprehensive plan has already set a preliminary zoning should they ever come into the city. We recommend, this resolution would state that we would be following our comprehensive plan map on that respect. The third part of the resolution is to note that the city would require the annexation area to assume its proportionate share of the voter-approved bonded indebtedness that existed as of the effective date of the annexation. So that just means that if the city has any outstanding bonds, the properties that would come into the city as part of this annexation would be responsible to pay into those bonds also. And we can get you some information about what that means.
And just to let me jump in for the property owners who are here tonight, the letter that I sent you, that's already included in the tax comparison, so...
And then if the, if the annexation is approved, if the city council wishes to go forward, then where there's a statement in here saying that we will accept a full petition for the entire annexation area. Should the city council pass this resolution tonight, which we hope is the case, the Boundary Review Board will be given notification of the annexation process and the proposed annexation, which is the next step on this slide up here. That begins the 45-day review period for the Boundary Review Board. After that 45-day review period, then the applicant can submit the final petition, which is equal to 60% of the assessed valuation of the proposed annexation area. At that point, the city council would hold a public hearing to actually determine whether or not the city would like to accept the annexation area into the city boundaries. That's the process in a nutshell. The public hearing would be held at the end, of course, as Aaron mentioned already, there's a lot of public input in this process that is involved with the actual proposal that might be happening on the property, should it be annexed into the, into the city. So Jenna's gonna go over the public hearing, the public participation process and the environmental studies that are going to be required in a moment, but first, we'd like to take care of the resolution that is up for review.
And so the request tonight is for action on the resolution that begins the process. And again, a public comment will be received throughout the process, and before any decision is made, there will be a formal public hearing where testimony is taken, and then it will be presented to the council. You know, we're talking about somewhere in the 45 to 60-day window from now for possible action.
John, can you, I just want to make sure we clarify, this is for annexation only, this has absolutely nothing to do with what's gonna happen there?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, that gets twisted around.
No, that's a great point, because there's so many things going on, there've been some big articles in the paper detailing some of the technology, and one of the proposals that's out there right now is for Janiki Bioengineering to, or Bioenergy to locate a research and technology, you know, campus at Northern State, and it's exciting stuff. There are a lot of steps between now and something like that happening. The question before you tonight is whether this 230 acres should become part of the city limits.
And that's it?
And that's the only question on the table tonight. Yeah, the, you know, the other issues have many months of process, and Jenna will go through in much more detail what the planned action looks like, and the EIS, and all of that. There's really probably about a year worth of process yet to go before something of that magnitude could actually begin work up at the site. So two different questions, thank you for pointing that out.
Hey, John, I have a question. It's a small point, but I just want to make sure I have the numbers right. You said five property owners, but I spoke with a property owner last week who said she owned two of the parcels, so does that mean there's really only four property owners?
That would be correct. There is an anomaly on the assessor's page that was giving us some difficulty to determine exactly who is the owner. It was an odd anomaly, but there are five parcels in that area, and they've all been contacted.
Any more discussion?
Which property owner did you talk to? Or maybe we could talk about, I'd like to track that one down, because there are, on the assessor's page, there's an address and tax address that are crisscrossed, so we mailed the both, but that was an anomaly that I didn't quite sort through.
Well then, come to the bullpen tonight with us for dinner, and you can talk to her too.
Okay, all right.
There's no objections from those four property owners?
Well, you know, we have not asked that question. You know, the property owners were given the information about the annexation process, the impact to their property if brought into the city, both on property taxes, which actually go down, utility taxes which go up, access to sewer, the possibility of sewer connections, the possibility of being required to connect to sewer at some point in the future if there's a failure or subdivision. So the question has not been asked, do you want to be in or out? That's something that I would expect we may hear from property owners as we move through the process, and they learn more. You know, that's, you know, this is one of those, this funny situation where you've got a 225-acre piece that says we'd like to come in. Now, they don't really, we can't bring them in and leave the other five out, so we've got five parcels who are, you know, woke up one morning and found out, hey, I'm now part of a process, so I need to learn about it. So it's kind of new to them, and I've made myself available to answer any questions, sent what I thought was a fairly detailed letter explaining the process and some of the impacts, and I would expect that all of the owners up there are looking at it and thinking about it, trying to figure out what it means to their properties.
Oh, I actually just talked to Shorty Parish today, and so his only concern was that, of course, he wants, he wants to keep doing his wood thing.
Yeah.
Other than that, he, you know, it's a good, it's a good deal for him, so...
No, I don't think there's any issue with Shorty selling firewood.
And, and cutting it, so, I mean, he just wants to make sure.
Yeah.
That's his way of life, so...
Well, he's been doing that for a long time.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 912-TAC-15, approving annexation, boundary, zoning, and assuming the bonded indebtedness.
Second.
Would you, could I read this whole thing out? Wouldn't you?
Feel free.
All right, I'm gonna read that up to make it clear. So we got a motion by Councilmember Wagner, second by Councilmember Meamber.
How old is that? Meamber?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Galbraith, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ted was a good guy. Ted was a good guy, yeah. All right. Resolution to the city of Cedar Wully, Washington, accepting a proposed annexation petition for approximately 230 acres located northeast of the city of Cedar Wully's city limits, north of SR 20, and east of Frutdale Road within the Cedar Wully Urban Growth Area, Washington. Any further discussion? Yeah, I just want to clarify, the public will have a chance to weigh in in the future, and not today, correct? Yes. This is just the starting line. That's what I've been told.
Are we setting that date today?
No, no, because part of that date will be dependent upon the BRB's process. So for public comment, if people are eager to get the ball rolling, written comments, start getting those in now, but in terms of actually formal testimony on the record before the council, that will be a scheduled meeting for which notice will be provided to, what, we got 500 feet from the site?
500 feet.
Property owners within 500 feet, of course, will be in the newspaper and all that.
And we won't have, we won't set an annexation hearing date until we receive the full annexation petition, which would be forthcoming.
Okay, this is 912. Okay, any more discussion?
One.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Pass unanimous. Okay, we will go to item seven, and this is, again, Aaron, a resolution to approve the Cedar Wully collaboration with the port in Skagit County.
So this resolution is not a required resolution as part of any process. However, the city of Cedar Wully, to my knowledge, hasn't really ever gone through a subarea plan and planned action in the way that we're beginning today. This is a tool that's been around for a long time in the state, and has been used for large-scale projects to go through the environmental process once as part of a master plan, so they can grow and expand in the future without each time having to step back and go through that process again. But it's a fairly onerous process for everyone involved. It's costly, time-consuming, it requires exhaustive studies, and the purpose of this resolution is just to kind of clearly lay out the roadmap, so you all know what's going on, so the staff expectation and council expectations are aligned, and it continues to affirm our working relationship with the county, and the port, and the state as we move through this. So Jenna will walk you through the details, she's actually done it before, so it's all kind of new to us.
Thank you, Aaron, and good evening, councilor and mayor. So before you is a resolution that expresses the city's intent to work in partnership with the Port of Skagit and Skagit County on a subarea plan and planned action EIS for the Northern State property. And this is a simple flow chart that shows you the steps that we will be going through. And then, if I may, I'd like to read the recitals from the resolution for the public's benefit, so that they can see what that resolution contains and how we will move forward following this evening. So to begin with, we acknowledge the annexation petition and the desire for the state, state's desire to have the property annexed into the city of Cedar Wully. The city of Cedar Wully, the port of Skagit, and Skagit County are collaborating to assess the potential for redevelopment of the former Northern State hospital site, now referred to as North Cascade's Gateway Center, and illustrated in Exhibit A, which is attached as part of the resolution before you. And that's referred to as the planned action area, and that property is only the state-owned property. And just by way of clarification, the interlocal agreement that the port, the city, and the county have entered into has named the Port of Skagit as the administrator, so they are the administrator throughout this process. The city of Cedar Wully, the port of Skagit, and Skagit County have entered into this interlocal agreement that I just referred to, to evaluate the potential for mixed-use redevelopment of the former, former hospital campus. The following goals were stated and set agreement: encourage private sector investment to create and sustain jobs; continue and promote public recreation use of Northern State; protect environmentally sensitive areas, in particular Hanson Creek; acknowledge and protect the historic significance of Northern State; acknowledge and respect Upper Skagit Indian Tribal Nation's interests. The agencies have successfully obtained a grant, a grant from the State Department of Commerce to support a thorough and transparent public planning process that will result in a subarea plan to be adopted into the city of Cedar Wully's comprehensive plan that will embody future development plans for the property. Concurrent with the subarea planning process, the agencies will initiate a planned action environmental impact statement in accordance with state law, the purpose of which is to emphasize quality environmental review of early planning efforts and early public input to shape decisions. The basic steps in designating planned action projects are to prepare an environmental impact statement, designate the planned action projects by ordinance, and review permit applications for consistency with the designated planned action. The intent is to provide more detailed environmental analysis during formulation of planning proposals rather than at the project permit review stage. The planned action ordinance is expected to encourage redevelopment and revitalization at the North Cascade Gateway Center, and property owners and potential investors will be encouraged by a streamlined development process that takes place under the planned action. The planned action EIS environmental impact statement, which will study elements of the human and physical environment, will help the city identify impacts of development and specific mitigation measures in advance of development proposals. This level of study and detail will facilitate proposed development, and will provide developers with the information that will be required to qualify as a planned action project. Skagit County, for the purpose of review under the State Environmental Policy Act, otherwise known as SEPA, and in accordance, and in accordance with state law, has transferred lead agency authority of the SEPA process to the city of Cedar Wully prior to the finalization of annexation to better facilitate the public process. And typically, whatever jurisdiction the property lies within, that jurisdiction conducts the environmental review, but in this case, that, that SEPA authority is being transferred to the city. To ensure a robust and transparent public process, attached to the resolution is Exhibit B, is a draft public participation plan which outlines opportunities for public involvement at the various stages of annexation, subarea plan, and planned action EIS processes. This resolution was intended to commence what will become a robust public process that will provide significant opportunities for public comment as outlined in the attached public participation plan. It is therefore resolved that the city of Cedar Wully will work collaboratively with the partnership agencies, the Port of Skagit and Skagit County, and that the city of Cedar Wully will accept the transfer of SEPA lead agency authority from Skagit County, and thereafter intends to initiate planned action SEPA procedures. But the city of Cedar Wully encourages a robust and inclusive public participation process, and to that end, has developed a preliminary draft public participation plan. But the partnership has begun the identification of SEPA elements to be studied during that process, and that the city of Cedar Wully, together with the partnering agencies, will ensure that the five goals listed will be carried through the planning process and reflected in the final planning documents. So on the screen is an outline of what is included in the public participation plan, and I'll go through that just briefly. So the consulting firm, Mall Foster, hired by the Port of Skagit, is preparing documents showing different development alternatives of that site. Those will be carried forward through the environmental impact review, the SEPA process that I just spoke of. Once those are completed, or in a preliminary form, we will begin the scoping process for the environmental impact statement. So we will issue a determination of significance, which will then move us forward to the EIS and scoping process. We anticipate a scoping notice to go out within the next few weeks. The EIS scoping period is 30 days, so that's a time for the public to come in, take a look at the alternatives, review the scoping notice, and provide comment to the city. Towards the end of that 30-day period, there will be a public hearing on the scoping of the EIS, and agencies, tribe, public are welcome to be at that meeting. We will have a consultant team there to go through the different scenarios of development, to talk about things such as transportation, utilities, critical areas, historic preservation. Then we begin the work. We actually analyze the specific elements of the environment, and we have consultants that will be doing that and preparing draft studies. That will be put together within a draft environmental impact statement, and again, the public will have an opportunity, 40 days, to review that and comment on the draft EIS. There will also be a public hearing during that time as well. The final EIS, which will address the... The final EIS, which will address the comments and concerns that come up during the draft environmental impact statement, will be issued probably towards the end of the summer, beginning September, we're not quite sure of those dates yet, and again, another hearing will take place. So concurrent with that environmental review process, the Planning Commission will be looking at the subarea planning alternatives. Those will be public meetings, and again, comment will be taken during those meetings. What will happen with the preferred alternative, so the plan that is chosen as the preferred plan to move forward? That will go to the Planning Commission for review, because this plan will be adopted into the city's comprehensive plan, so there will be public hearings on that, at least one. Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council, the city council will then hold another public hearing, and then decide on whether or not to approve or modify the subarea plan as presented. At that same time, you'll have the planned action ordinance, which will come after the end of the environmental review process, so council will take action on that as well. We also anticipate a number of housekeeping items within the zoning code, so that we recognize what a planned action is, and we have a way to review projects under the planned action ordinance, once it's adopted. So that sums up the processes, and as Aaron mentioned, it is very complex, there are a lot of steps to go through, but it is a very inclusive public process, so we look forward to having people involved in this. Thank you.
That's it, so we're looking for a motion to adopt that resolution and get the ball rolling on the subarea plan and draft environmental impact statement process.
What's the goal, the date, that the goal is to have the annexation completed? You have to have a goal.
The annexation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so really procedurally, it's something that could come back to the council in about two months, so we don't really have a target date, because we can't control that date, so there's not a lot of point in having it, but if the process runs as it could with the BRB and that element of it, then I would expect you would see an annexation ordinance in June.
That's pretty quick.
I have a question. Who's responsible for providing the funds to pay for all the additional consultant work and all the extra work and time spent on this? Is that all in the city, or is it spread between all three agencies?
That's a good question. The city, the port, and the county are all engaged in this collaborative partnership, which we started now about a year and a half ago, with some initial funding. The three parties put together some funding, as well as some in-kind contribution, and used dollars from the Department of Ecology to begin the adaptive reuse study, which included some preliminary environmental work. Since that time, the adaptive reuse study has basically wrapped up, and we've moved into this master planning, planned action process, which is funded by, the port of Skagit put in $100,000, Skagit County put in $75,000, the city of Cedar Woolley put in $25,000 in some in-kind support. Susan and Peter Janiky put in $100,000, and the State Department of Commerce put in $212,500 to a grant that went to Skagit County, which has then been passed through to the port. So in total, we have about $600,000 for that element of it. There's also, I think they're getting closer to some additional state funding through Department of Ecology to complete the cleanup, well, complete the next phase of the cleanup work on site. So there's a fairly significant partnership out there, locally and at the state, to make this happen, so really, the city's burden is the smallest of any of our partners, which reflects our limited budget. Smiling at the partners, they can add another zero, you know.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have, Jenna, this is kind of a unique process, and if I understand it, we get the heavy lifting out of the way early, so that it becomes easier in the process down the line. Where has this been used before, and what were the results? Do we have an example?
There are a number of examples. Actually, I worked in a city, the city of Renton, and it was one of the first cities to use a planned action, but I think Everett passed theirs first. The city of Everett, oh, gosh.
Well, that was, the example I think you're reaching for was the Boeing, and that's actually where our funding came from, is when Boeing was moving forward with the XXX, I think it is, they needed to expand their plant in Everett, and they were very concerned about the lengthy environmental process, and the governor noticed that it was quick. And they looked back, and they'd done a planned action, I think in the '70s, maybe? That far back, '80s?
I thought he was in the '80s.
'80s, so a long time ago, that already permitted the environmental portion of the next phase, which was instrumental in retaining the XXX. And so the governor saw that, thought that was pretty interesting, got legislative funding to do additional planned actions to support manufacturing jobs. That's where the $212,500 comes from that went to the county. That was essentially what was left in Commerce's kitty to fund planned action for job creation in the current biennium.
So it's a proven model, then?
No question about it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's new to us, but it's not a new tool to the cities who are doing larger manufacturing.
Well, and it's not just manufacturing, but they've used it for business parks, commercial centers, so Tecquilla, I think Longview, Kirkland, a number of cities all over the state have used this tool, which became effective, I think it was in the mid-'90s, '94, '95. So it is a proven tool, but it is costly to go through, because you're doing that work up front, and you're doing it through an environmental impact statement. So a lot of analysis, a lot of work goes into it, to have everything set up, so when the projects come in, they can rely on that work that's been done up front, and not have to go through it. So you have a level of predictability, and again, it streamlines it for those development projects.
Kind of on a side note, nothing to really do about this collaboration process, noticing here that there's going to be special attention to Hanson Creek. If Janikys are going to be doing any building construction and such, I know Hanson Creek runs to the east, and Brickyard is to the south and to the west, if any construction happens, is that going to impact Brickyard Creek any? Because it's always got issues with water and things. They do that.
Right, but all the critical areas will be studied. The reason Hanson Creek was specifically called out is one of the partnership objectives is to reflect the significant investment that the county, the state, and the tribe have put into restoring Hanson Creek. So it's not so much to elevate that, it's just to say, you know, look, there's been a lot of work done on salmon recovery around that creek, so we just wanted to be really clear that we were going to pay special attention to it. But under the process, really, Brickyard Creek's going to be equally as important as are any of the other wetlands and, you know, springs that feed into the waters and those sorts of things. So they've got a wetlands biologist on the team working on that issue as well.
Any more questions? Okay, we need a motion or something?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 913-TAC-15, a resolution of the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, initiating the collaborative process involving the port of Skagit and Skagit County to prepare a subarea plan and planned action environmental impact statement for the property referred to as the North Cascade's Gateway Center located northeast of the city of Cedar Woolley city limits, north of SR-20 and east of Fruitdale Road within the Cedar Woolley urban growth area.
Skagit County, Washington. Second. Tough act to follow, Rick. Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Limley, a second by Councilmember Sandstrom, to approve Resolution Number 913-15, a resolution of the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, initiating the collaborative process involving the port of Skagit and Skagit County to prepare a subarea plan and planned action environmental impact statement for the property referred to as the North Cascade Gateway Center located northeast of the city of Cedar Woolley city limit, north of SR-20 and east of Fruitdale Road within the Cedar Woolley urban growth area, Washington. Any further comments? Yeah, I got one more question, it pops up a few times in there, says Cedar Woolley's going to assume bonded indebtedness. Can you explain that?
Well, and what we're talking about there is we've got voted debt right now on this building over here, and so somebody coming into the city would share in the repayment of that in proportion to their property value. So it just puts them on the same footing as everybody else in the city. And even with that, you know, their property rate goes down by, and I don't remember the exact number, it's about 60 cents, 65 cents per thousand AV by moving from the county to the city. So, you know, that's information that was given to the property owners. Of course, it doesn't apply very much to the state, since, you know, they don't really pay property taxes.
And you'll get better place service, in my opinion. That's the only question I had. Okay, any more questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
He against, passes unanimous. I guess I don't see anything else on the agenda. I guess we'll go to committee reports and reports from officer. We'll start with Chief Tucker, is he over there? Oh, there he is.
I'm down here at the little kids' table.
I was wondering that.
I got the chair up as high as it'll go.
I thought you went out on a call or something.
Nope, I'm still here. Just got a couple of things, you saw we got Angela here, that's going to be the fourth officer we've hired in the last couple of months, we've got three in the academy right now, and we're going to gear up to hire one more. We just got notice of one of our officers is going to retire, he gave us his written notice. Congratulations, Joanne and Tom. And we're going to be able to replace Tom's position early, he's going to work through most of the end of the year, depending on what his wife says, and then we'll hopefully have his replacement ready to go and ready to hit the street whenever he's out the door. If any of you came by the building yesterday, we had Parks Academy out in the fire bay with six drunk people on a wet lab for the field sobriety testing for the Parks employees, and they, actually, the college came over to do their standardized field sobriety testing, and Dean provided a place for them to work, and they got people intoxicated, and then the park ranger cadets all went out and tested them for the field sobriety test.
Must have been a hundred of those guys here.
I know, and I'm sorry we couldn't fit you in.
I couldn't believe it.
The mayor actually volunteered, we already had enough volunteers that day.
Next year, I'm going to do it.
There we go.
And it was a lot of goodies there, too, you guys.
Yeah, a lot of snacks and a lot of drinks. But that was real successful and a real positive thing. We're kind of trying to partner up with the college on several projects, and when we go over to use the college's simulator, or have them come over, we get to share in that, so that's kind of the trade back that we got for that. And Councilman Kinzer, your question on the video, Tamara's away this week, but as soon as she's back, we'll get that video done up for you for that.
Thank you.
As long as we can find everything right, and we'll get you a copy of that.
Thank you.
And the last thing is, is we may, or we're making an offer to a aerials replacement at the front desk. We had four people apply for the receptionist position, and we're going to make an offer to a young lady who's been around for quite a while, she's a brand-new person, though. One of our other folks decided not to take the position, but we're starting off with a really young gal who's hopefully going to say yes when I ask her if she wants a job tomorrow, so we're moving forward with that, and that'll be a part-time position. Hopefully, at some point, I'll be able to turn it into a long-term, full-time position in the next few years. And that's it.
Thank you. Chief Klinger?
Yeah, oh, once again, ma'am, I want to tell you we're testing, we're losing a couple more firemen, not only with the retirement, but the guys are getting ready to go out and get hired, so we've got a testing process that's opening up. I talked to Rick and make sure that it's getting up on the reader board, but we'll be testing on the 19th of this month, so for both outside and for residents.
Mark?
Mayor, I was fortunate enough to attend the 2015 American Public Works Association conference and meeting this past week. The city received the Project of the Year Award for our SR-20 Cook Road realignment and extension project in the category of $5 to $25 million. That was quite an achievement for the city to receive that, there was a lot of competition. They have other classifications, and also, just for your information, Skagit County's Fur Island Roundabout Project also won the same award for the up to $5 million class, so Skagit County was well-represented on the podium that night, and we were glad to be a part of that. Stephen Gorsester, who's the executive director of TIB, the funding agency who provided over $5 million towards the project, was gracious enough to attend the banquet with us, and actually accepted the award for the contractor, so we have his picture up on the podium, he was tickled pink about that, and so that stood us in good stead. Beyond that, our SR-9 Jameson arterial extension project is in full design, we have submitted the channelization plan, which is kind of the first submittal to the Department of Transportation for their approval on the project, and should receive their comments back in the next couple of weeks and move to the next phase. Beyond that, we're busy designing the Green Street Sewer and Road Replacement Project, we'll have that one out to add either on the 23rd or the 30th of this month, close in May, and start in June, complete that by August. It's a plan right now, and the Babe Ruth Ball Field Project that we're working on in collaboration with the school district and the Babe Ruth Association has actually started now. The school district has done the weed killing for the grass on the field that we're using, and plowed that, and as soon as it dries up enough, we'll start degrading, we're looking at June 1st on that, so that's all I had, thank you.
John?
Mike, maybe before John speaks up. I know, Mark, that that plaque probably says City Cedar Woolley, but I believe your name belongs on there, too. You have been a driving force in the grants and the amount of money and the projects that you've done in this community, so kudos to you for earning that award for the city.
Well, I appreciate it, sir. It truly is a team effort, and, you know, this council has been...
But you the spearhead for that, and kind of kept it on track, so, thanks.
The council has been instrumental in pushing those projects forward, and I'd just like to say, you know, with the presentation on the Northern States project tonight, the foresight of the council and the administration on moving these projects forward has been really key to getting the city ready to take advantage of that project. I believe Janiky has recognized that, they've been a partner in all of those projects and very supportive, so that's been a good job on all's part, and we're, of course, not done yet, you've heard me say that every time we've had a ribbon cutting, and this project moves that bar a little higher with the additional trips that are going to be generated by that site, and if it successfully moves forward, as we all hope it will do, so, yeah. And John reminded me, I don't want to miss the opportunity to let you know of additional fruit that's being born on the renewed partnership that now is in place between Skagit County and the city. Last night, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, where they recommended a resolution, I guess would be what it would be called, to the Board of Commissioners to implement the long-neglected collection of impact fees for the city of Cedar Woolley. That's pretty huge, it's been 15 years since that process started. Pat Hayden attended with us last night and did an excellent job of kind of giving the historical background on it. Pat's been very, very involved in that entire process, and actually volunteered his time to go last night and to write a letter for us to support that motion. The county attorney, assistant district attorney, who was assigned to that task, was very even-handed in his handling of that, and it actually passed unanimously with the Planning Commission and goes to the Commissioners on the 14th of this month, and so we'll attend that as well, and hopefully, that spirit continues to move forward. What that does for us is, in our urban growth area, which covers the areas including Northern States, for instance, we have in our transportation plan, among other things, fire, police, parks, the ability under state law, under GMA, to collect impact fees, but it requires that the county cooperate in that process. Even though they had been doing that for the city of Mount Vernon all these years, they had basically, for political reasons, chosen not to collect those fees for the city of Cedar Woolley, and it's put us at a decided disadvantage... And it's put us at a decided disadvantage in the outlying areas. And in addition to the impact fees, they had never adopted the urban standards for the city and the urban growth area either. So we have 15 years plus of development in the outlying areas that are not to city standards, which we haven't collected any money to bank towards improving those in the future, which has created a huge, huge issue for us. But at least from the 14th forward, we should be able to begin to rectify that in the future. Unfortunately, much of the developable land has already been developed more or less to urban standards, I mean, to urban densities, but without the corresponding infrastructure. So we've got another hurdle to cover with the county and that's going to be the subject of continuing discussions over the months and years to come. And we're looking forward to continuing in the cooperative means that has been generated much out of this Northern States opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
And to piggyback on what Mark was speaking of is in the urban growth area, the city currently is, as you are well aware, undergoing an analysis of our future growth patterns and the type of development in our existing urban growth area, which has been, as Mark stated, to urban densities but without urban standards. So no streets, sewer, sidewalk, light, street lighting, that sort of thing, is going to be an issue that's reviewed under the buildable lands analysis as far as how much land is available for development within our urban growth area. And so at the last city council meeting, the council approved the contract to hire Edie Hovey to do our buildable lands analysis. So the next morning, got started right away with delivering data to the consultant and they've already began their legwork on the buildable lands analysis. So I've been working quite a bit with a consultant on that in between a lot of Northern State activity going on in the office. So we've been torn in lots of directions as well as, I don't know, if you've noticed around town, there's lots of building going on. And with more building going on, it seems to be, I don't know if it's the market or the fact that people are now building again in Cedar Woolley, it's created a desire for others to build in the city. So I'm requiring, receiving significant interest from other parties for buying new properties, buying existing properties to develop single-family houses and other developments. So things are really going gamebusters over in the building and planning department. It's been quite chaotic and entertaining in a way, so. At this rate, you know, I appreciate the help that we have. That's all I got for you today.
Kind of.
I really have nothing other than what I presented this evening on Monday.
I put on your council base a copy of the jail report from the county and you can see the short summary of that, besides the pretty picture, is the project continues to be on track for the planned opening in the spring of 2017. It's in line with Charlie's birthday, you know, so there's certain targets that are important to meet. We're going to have that one met and it continues to be tracking the budget as the finance committee's approved. Also on your date says, "First mailer in our Quality Life series," in case you didn't get it at home, "dealing with cars on sidewalks." Hoping to get another one out this month. I'm keeping a watch on Laura. She's been fairly overwhelmed with dogs recently, so kind of have to, we may have to temper those depending on the level of response. But Councilman Sandstrom's been out taking pictures, so if you've seen him skulking around your neighborhood at your house, you might ask him which code enforcement violation he's taking pictures of, because you too could appear on a "What's Wrong With This Picture" mailer that goes out to 4,000 households in the near future. I guess piggybacking on what both Mark and John have said, I feel like we've turned a corner on our EMS conversations recently as well. We're not at the point of a developed proposal, but it seems like there's a kind of a movement pushing in a direction with the county working with the cities to kind of move some issues forward that have been a little bit stuck for a while. And we're now on basically a weekly meeting schedule with kind of a technical team and then a monthly schedule with the county commissioners and mayors involved. And I feel like I could see a path forward that ultimately could bring a series of agreements to the city council over the course of the next couple of months. And one would be an local agreement with the county dealing with some EMS levy support for what we're doing in EMS as well as an expanded role for the cities. Another would be an agreement with Central Valley dealing with billing for services. We're trying to work with them through their process and legal review. And then a third would be an agreement with Central Valley dealing with their use of our equipment and personnel to expand their capacity. So it's just a lot more fun to be working collaboratively. We opened bids yesterday on our repeater project. The bids were not crazy out of line, but they did come in with an overall project budget about $15,000 beyond what we'd put in the budget. We also discovered that we don't have access to copper up there without a copper buildout, which is likely to necessitate us using fiber, which is on-site already. Fiber is far superior for us. It'll allow dispatch to actually control and monitor the systems from Mount Vernon. But it comes with a fairly steep buy-in. It's about a $30,000 buy-in and that's for three pieces of equipment, a channel bank, a router, and a GPS clock, which I'm told is an absolutely necessary component to make the fiber work. So on the downside, that's $30,000. On the plus side, both fiber and copper, we're going to come with them a monthly carrying cost and it looks like the dispatch center is thinking that they would take the monthly carrying costs and out years so they can control this center. But we'd be on tap to buy this operation. So we're looking at about $165,000 total cost. We have, as you may recall, funded, actually the total cost will be closer to $185,000, but within our budget would be about $165,000. The Department of Homeland Security is helping us with $20,000 worth of equipment that is not reflected there. They'll actually buy it and own it. So I don't, I'm not asking for a budget amendment tonight. I guess I'm giving you the heads up that I'll be bringing a budget amendment and unless I hear objection, it's my intention to proceed with issuing the contract, awarding it. We've got a tentative start date of April 27th. It's a 10-day build. Mike Voss will be managing it for us. And we're looking at a go-live, set a firm go-live date of Officer Lazaron's retirement. So he'll be able to use the new frequency before he's done being a police, a full-time police officer. So George VI can sign out on Cedar Woolley air, sort of like Charlie's birthday, you know, you got to have these dates. So I guess just to be really clear, what I'm asking you tonight is if there's any objection to me spending an extra, you know, $45,000, you will get that in the form of a budget amendment. And we do have the capability of funding it. I'm hoping to possibly get some additional homeland security money for maybe part of the channel bank or something of that nature. But we are at this point into the project about $45,000 and the contractor's ready to mobilize. So we're kind of where we need to be and at least in my view, this is mission critical. And when we're done, we'll have a fully air-conditioned permanent shelter with generator backup powder, power a fiber connected directly to the dispatch center, giving us, you know, our new frequency range repeated within the city. One last point, I guess, on this. We may very well ask to spend a little bit more, as long as we're spending money, to add a second antenna. And Mike thinks, Mike Voss thinks he's got an old radio we could use and convert to allow our own public workstation to become a repeated station on the tower. So I'll be working with the contractor to see what sort of additional cost. We don't think it'll be much because they're climbing the tower already. And in the long term, we may have some other partners who wish to join this tower at some point, who could potentially help pay for part of our costs if they come on board. So I think Mike's view is at some point, the sheriff really ought to have a voting receiver there to provide enhanced coverage and that the Fire TAC 8 ought to have a voting receiver there to enhance coverage and provide redundancy. So a lot of moving parts, I realize that. And I apologize if the plan isn't a little bit more detailed. It's the first time I've ever been involved with building a tower site, but it is mission critical. So are there any objections to me proceeding with that additional cost of the fiber of about $30,000 and then our bid cost going up by about $15,000? We'll bring that back to you as part of the budget amendment two. And like I say, my hope is the buildout will be done May 8. Mike Voss goes on vacation and we've got some equipment delays, so programming and actually go-live sometime in June. And, you know, of course, if this works, the school will also be paying about $60,000 towards the project. So that's an unknown yet. We're counting on it working, but that's another potential risk. So. All right, that's all I've got. One last thing I've got and that is I will not be here at the next meeting, so you ought to be able to set a record. I'm looking.
For some reason, my microphone seems to have disappeared. Today I attended a class sponsored by our accounting software regarding our annual report and the filing and where the state auditor's office is planning on going in the next few years and the changes that we can anticipate, some good, some not so good. But it was a really good class, so I'm glad I was able to attend. Teresa's been quite busy providing support to our civil service folks with all the testing and all of the background checks and all the things going on with our new hirings. And Serena's been quite involved with collections as of late. You may have seen some ads on TV about it's not tax season, it's refund season. Well, Serena's been taking good advantage of this refund season, so we've seen some sizable collections in March on some delinquent accounts. So things are looking good in that respect.
Saturday and Sunday is Wood Fest. New location this year, Cascade Middle School. That's what, 9 to 4 Saturday and 10 to 3 on Sunday. Craft vendors, food demonstrations, wood carvings, good local stuff. Get a chance, take it in.
Mike Stewart's a person who works with that over the, at the high school. And he is a Cedar Woolley grad, born through and through, putting this program through probably, that is probably one of the most outstanding programs in the state, working with wood. I wanted to say two other things. One of the things that I can say, I've been on this council for a long time, almost 12 years, and I've never seen in those 12 years, the county, the city, and the port working together as a unit for a common project. I'm excited. I'm really, really excited. That's never happened before. And, you know, I'm just glad it's here. And I just wanted to say that. Then I also want to welcome Dana on board. She's a blessing. She's going to help us through this process and she's been there. And I think that's huge.
I just wanted to, I guess it was a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago, we had the DVSS or, you know, they came and talked about sex trafficking. And so April is actually, well, I want to get it right, Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Skagit Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Services is showing a documentary on the 22nd at the Lincoln Theater. 7:30, the tickets are $10 and you could probably call them and get tickets. I just didn't want to forget that for the next meeting, I'll mention it again, but that's it.
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second by Councilmember Limley.
Let him recite.
All those in favor stand.
Bye. Say goodbye.